Ladies and gentlemen, to the United States, to the American Republic, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Amendments to the agenda. Dr.
I have one. On new business, I'd like to put in a discussion on highway safety program.
Anybody, I guess we'll, we need a motion.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any questions?
Comments? All those in favor?
Governor's Highway Safety.
Yeah.
So they're great, so.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That's on new business. Approval of the minutes for June 18th, which is the last regular meeting.
So, as presented.
Second.
Oh, there's yours. The one we had.
That's right.
Or was that one? Yeah.
We were here for that one.
Sorry. Other one.
Thank you. That's the second. Additions, deletions, corrections? All of them favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
It's this one.
Okay. Uh, this would be the minutes for June 27th, the last Thursday, I think it was. Second. Thank you.
That's the one I want here.
Everybody okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Fairly simple one. Hopefully those numbers are right.
I checked them today, yes.
Can I still sign that one?
Yeah. Yeah. Still went as a person. Affirmative vote, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, okay. Five minutes for public discussion. Going once, going twice. Okay, Ryan Mar, designated walking path. You're up.
Okay. So I'm on Ryan Mar. On behalf of Down and Johnson Physical Therapy here in town. And for a couple of years, we've wanted to, or thought about trying to design some type of a walking path or route to try to just promote people getting out and being able to walk in the town area. Seen it in some other towns or cities where they might have a designated pathway that's a safe pathway. Maybe have a bench or two, with small signs that give people some stretches or exercises to do with that place. And I think it's fun. Several different ways that that can happen. Degrees of difficulty that you could make that. But I guess the first question I have of the board is whether that's a project that we are allowed to do with, we have to have some type of permit through the town to do that? Is there a cost for us to do that for the town? Or is it something we have to get permission from? Or if it's an idea that needs to be, you need more detail on?
That's probably the biggest thing. If you came, if you came with some sort of proposal, then we would be able to see whether or not it does need a permit or it doesn't. And if, you know, cost involved, but obviously setting a few benches here and there will cost a minimal amount. But it's probably something the town can do.
Uh-huh.
You know, it's just, it, we need to know what we're up against before we do.
Yep.
But it certainly sounds good.
Yeah, it's something initially, we were kind of thinking that we would just do it completely on our own. And then the more we thought about it, the more, you know, the nicer you can make it. You can have some nicer benches so we can know if we might even approach local businesses and see if they would want to sponsor a bench. And they could have a small logo of their business to try to promote the local businesses in addition that would support that small program. I don't think it would cost all that much, but I understand you would need specific more details. We had kind of made three small routes in town that were of different mileage that we would have a map that would be given out probably at our PT office so people could come and get it there, or maybe at the, in town somewhere with those brochures so people could easily access it. And I guess the thing to do, I started to design some routes and then I realized that you may have had some engineering firms that were coming in and maybe looking at changing crosswalks or changing walkways or something perhaps in terms of revitalization. So I didn't want to really get too involved and then realize that all my road crossings were going to be at major intersections where they shouldn't be. So I didn't know if there was any time element with that.
We haven't done, we haven't done anything from the recommendations we got from the Downtown Development Committee. We're moving on that a little bit, hopefully. But we're certainly open. And most all of, correct me if I'm wrong, but most all of those recommendations would fit right into what you're talking about. Because the whole idea of the downtown stuff is traffic coming and more pedestrian travel. So it seems like a, it seems like a natural fit, at least.
Certainly would be a pretty, pretty simple project, really. But just really just trying to get people to be out and about using our streets more for healthy living and things like that. So anyhow, I guess at this point then, I need to get more some hard numbers or try to figure out cost by for you and then.
You know, routes, I think would be good, just in case there's a red flag for traffic or, or, you know, congestion or something like that. But I, you know, with this Fairhaven.
Yeah.
We're not that congested and, you know, the traffic is controllable theoretically.
All right. I'll try to find an app that has a better way of designing some map routes on. And I used that for the five K race down at the Chili Cook off the whole thing. I just wasn't able to get that working well enough to give you guys something to look at tonight. So next time I'll just bring something for you to look at, I guess.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions?
No, sounds good.
Yeah. It sounds great. I mean, whatever we can do to promote the town and whatever you can do to incorporate the park and that. Obviously, you know, people should see that.
Great. So that's really nice. It was all I, I just started with.
Have at it. Come back when you got something. We can, we can poke holes and.
Yep. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks. Bourbon Head Reports. You're up, Sam.
That's a lot of feeling.
A lot more.
Uh, last week we got, we got big, we're coming tomorrow. There's some adjustments on the, you know, the shoulders. I've been up on the, got some brush. We did the import to the runway. Been up on Bigelow, got some stuff stepped out of the air. Now we just have to wait up to see that. So that job will be.
Is there a sign off for Bigelow?
The sign off?
For the grant?
I gotta send it to the ground where.
Uh-huh, okay. She'll come down or no?
Yeah. I guess that's it.
Got stuff to do, huh? That's a good thing. Bourbon Head Report.
So Recreation is, she was underneath new business. I didn't know if the board wanted to talk to her now or.
Well, it doesn't matter. I mean, let's do her.
Okay.
Let's, let's.
So we really just wanted to come and formally introduce ourselves. I'm Paul Rice and I'm the new Recreation Director.
I'm Hunter Foxton. Assistant Director.
We wrapped up our baseball season. We had 10 teams that support 132 baseball players, so that was really great. We are still running a summer faith group program that we're helping out. We are supporting the umpires and the coach for the math program. We're really excited though about our summer program. That kicked off last week. We have 86 registered kids attending as of right now, but that registration hasn't closed throughout the seven weeks. One thing that we're really excited about, because of some extra funding that you guys were able to give to us for this summer, we've been able to introduce, along with our daily recreation program that we're still consistently doing, we're also introducing organized clinics. So we've brought in coaches and teachers to come in and run these programs for us in the morning part of our rep day. And that includes basketball, arts, theater, dance, baseball. So they run for a week long period where kids really get introduction to either that sport or that activity. It's allowed for more structure for our kids, some learning, some skill building. So we're really excited and that rolls out next week. Yeah.
Are the clinics, are the clinics free or are they?
Uh, so we put a $5 fee on that to help offset the costs around, like, supporting the leaders and getting the supplies and the things that we need for the camp. So it's just a $5 fee for the full week. So it's a minimal charge for families to have their.
I would prefer that nobody got turned away.
Yes, for sure. Yes.
Perfect.
We still have a great collaboration.
That'd be terrible.
Yeah. We still have amazing collaboration with Fairhaven as well. And they're supporting the program as well as, you know, identifying families that need support too. So it's really great.
How many people are you feeding?
Uh, same number. So the first day we had 86 kids. We were feeding 86 kids that day. It's up and flowing today. We have 56 kids, so.
I don't kind of have some weather, what's going on. A lot of kids, they know what we do. Like, you know, we started, we didn't choose like water play this year. So this kid, the kids know like which days, whether you're water balloons and all that, you tend to get buckets on those days. And the stuff that, where they really enjoy doing, they know which day it is, so.
Questions?
We just have the one day of field trips.
Yep. Yep, we run our field trips. Yeah, our clinics, we're running Monday through Thursday and then Fridays. Every Friday is field trip day, so.
Sounds great. I mean, everybody does. It sounds like.
I would have done by the, I think it was today or yesterday. And you do have a lot of children. I mean, and it seemed like it was very well organized. You know, there's people around, they're playing with the kids, or girls, you know, and adults or someone who was with them. And I, I thought it was great, it was good. I thought, you know, you did a good job.
Thank you. Another thing that I didn't mention that we implemented this year too is the idea of junior counselors. So these are middle school kids who aren't ready to be done with coming to summer rec who still really want that experience. And for us, we're like, yeah, come and be a part of this. But we've given them a kind of a role in the program where they can shadow the paid counselors and help out with the younger kids. So that's been a really great kind of stepping stone for kids in our community to build and to, you know, work and be in.
We also like, in past years, so I know last year I volunteered for their program with Emily and Sarah. And it was more, there was all the counselors. But so this year we decided to do teams. And so for every, we have seven paid counselors. For each counselor, we have, there's a designated about 15 kids. It's in like a range of the ages. And that's your designated, you check in in the morning. So it's good, we like, that helps our organization as well. And so that they check in the morning, they do lunch count with them. It's like an individual check in. They see how your day is going, rather than just every kid out. And hopefully every kid last year in the, of course, we got checked out. But now we know that each person in counselor has these testers that they know they need to check with and we check with all.
That's great. That's, I was gonna ask about safety and that kind of thing anyways. The ratio was pretty good, less than 10 kids per person. That's good. Seems good anyways.
Is there a rule on that?
Uh, not a specific rule that we've had in the past. We like to keep it one to 10 of the school age kids. I think that like statewide you have 13 to one if it was the registered program. So we try to keep it within that number. And then Hunter and I don't have designated groups because we're overseeing the whole program. So we're really able to step in there and help out if there isn't going to work well with kids, so.
Looks great. It looks, it does. I mean, it looks like there's stuff to do. Pretty much everybody's done 130 to 140.
We also are centralized at the pavilion this year as well, compared to past year. Past year was that it was centralized out of the cafeteria. And so things were going, like your, like before, usually Emily or Sarah, one of them were up there. And so now we're centralized out of the pavilion. We're really down there and down with all the kids. And we're there for anything that is needed. We've got structured crafts this year, which is different. We made wind sockets yesterday, Fourth of July ones. And we did Fourth of July bracelets today. Also, they can take home and show their parents if they're doing what they're doing plus, so.
How does that work at the end of the day? Parents come pick up kids or do you?
Yeah, so pickup this year is out of the pavilion. So at like 10 minutes before dismissal, we bring all the kids into the pavilion. They each have to go and sit with their individual counselors within their groups. And then I stand a little bit outside of the pavilion. And as I identify parents, I call the kids out and then I walk up to their parents and then they go to their cars. So that's how we've been trying to manage that this year. So I always personally have an eye on each kid going to the.
No problem if parents not showing up.
Uh, no, sometimes they'll run a little late and we'll have them hanging out around the.
Hang out with us.
But we clean up and there's a kind of staff meeting during that time, so they'll be there with us until they get there. But I think even the latest so far, they've only been like 10, five or 10 minutes. So it's been great. We do have a large number of kids who are walkers. So we have two counselors that walk up to the top of the hill and then they're dismissed from there. So that's, they're just kids who live in town that have older siblings and stuff, so. Yeah.
Sounds like your base is covered. It's awful your fun.
It is fun. Yeah.
Question? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. It really is great to see.
I guess, is there anything else you need?
Good question.
We are very excited about getting a water hookup, which we hear is coming. So it's been very hard. Right now, our only water source is the school. So we, we are lugging five gallon trucks and buckets down from the school every day, which is definitely, we're, as far as water play goes, to keep the kids cool on hot days, we desperately need that. But the bathrooms are down here, which is a huge step. And they will have running water. We talked to Joe about getting a hose hookup down there as well, so they can run the hose for water tanks and things like that, so.
Perfect.
That's, I mean, definitely everything is need right now, but we know it's on the horizon. So we're just excited about that. Yeah.
Good.
Probably.
Good.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Well, keep us posted and if you do need, if you do need stuff, please come see us. You know, the biggest thing will be a review afterwards, so we know how to budget and, you know, for next year. I mean, you've got a pretty good, you got a pretty good start here. It's, it looks good. We'll see what we can build on that, hopefully.
Thank you.
Thanks. We will move on then. And you guys can hang around, but you don't have to. He gets, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Nobody else showed up, huh?
Oh, Communications. So we received a letter from the EDA, that's the United States Economic Development Administration. We, we applied to, for a grant for them to replace the Adams Street Bridge. We asked for 94% of that cost and they said, no, thank you. But they, the guy actually called me and he said, look, if you can come up with 50%, we'll, it's a done deal. So I wanted to let the board know just in case. It would be about $300,000. But, so.
It's only money. It's only money.
How long is that offer good for?
They, don't quote me on this, but it seems like they're having a hard time getting rid of that cash.
Well, is that what this?
Then they might help the Andy a little bit.
Is that what this, uh?
No.
No, it's different.
That's a different.
I've been beaten on everybody's door.
Oh, okay. All right.
Can you put it, can you, can you put another grant with it?
I asked. You can't use federal to match federal.
Okay.
Cause it's all federal.
But can I use, like a local? Is there any state?
I called the state and asked if they would give us some money. They said no. They wouldn't even give me a letter of support.
Nice chat.
What would be the amount you mentioned?
We would need at least $300,000.
Did you call up that temporary bridge or did you move that here?
We did. I'm waiting for Brian Sanderson. He's gonna come out and have a meeting with us. But that's not free. That's, you know, we gotta pay a monthly fee. And it can only be here, I think he said, for 42 months.
Hold on.
42 months.
It's only been in West, West Haven for probably six years.
Six years, oh man. Looks like they ran out of time.
It's still there.
They're building the bridge.
No, they.
It's out. You can't pass.
Well, it's probably because I'm here.
The Council on Aging sent a letter saying thank you to the Town of Fairhaven. We gave them $1,800 this year.
The voters did.
The voters did, yeah. The PBA. What does that stand for?
County Valley Authority?
No, P. New England Police Benevolent Association would like to start their negotiations. The board would need to decide who they want to negotiate with, the new police union with. I don't know if you guys want to jump into that tonight or not.
Oh, you got.
Put it on our next agenda.
Was this picking up someone? Thought it was on this one, but it isn't.
No, it wasn't.
Okay.
The plans are in for the town hall. That's what this is. And that big guy over there. Uh, what else have we got? Oh, the planes, the RC flyers. Yeah, they canceled their, their fly. They said it's too wet out there.
To park them.
To park, yeah. Uh, driver's training tomorrow. Vosha, Vermont OSHA is coming in to do a mockup inspection on the ninth. Oh, this is important. So there's a grant through the state, Economic Development Business Grant, that the town would apply for and then be a pass through for a business here in town. I'm proposing to have the town apply for the grant and then give that directly to the brewery, much like we did with Apple Tree. The money comes in and we just pass it right through. Doesn't cost the town anything, except my time. But to do that.
You have to designate, you have to designate a.
Recipient?
A recipient. Is it the way it works?
Yeah.
How much is a grant?
Uh, it's no more than $25,000. And the person receiving it would have to match that dollar for dollar. So if it's 25, you'd have to have 25 to match that.
This is different than the other local grant process program that we.
Yes.
Started this month.
Yep, that's different.
All right. Should that go into some sort of process? Or is this specifically, we can just choose one project and submit a grant?
Oh, you can just choose. There's, unless the board has a process, but I don't, I don't know if we've ever done this.
Yeah, I don't know if there's other projects that, I don't have one in mind, right?
Is there any other businesses thinking about that or? I mean, I, not, I don't have any problem with those guys, but.
The, the only other one I was thinking would be the cafe, but they're opening up already, so. And they, they have all their equipment and furniture onboard.
Can you support more than one?
Yeah, we can write more than one.
So it's not really a choice. It's, you think we should do it for this one and if someone else came, we could do it again?
Yeah. Yeah.
Not an either or.
It's not, no, it's not an either or. It's a matter of, yeah. Just doing it.
It's a way for the town to show support.
Can you contact those people and explain the situation? And, you know, get a, some sort of, some sort of commitment that they can cover that? I mean, I don't know what their finances are like and I.
Yeah, of course.
Would be an awful shame to get that and then not be able to get that.
Yeah. Does the board want to talk to them? Do you want me to bring them in?
Sure. We're due to talk to them anyway, sir. We still have a resolve.
This is gonna be just for the business itself. That's not for remodeling the department upstairs, correct?
It would be, yeah, for like equipment, is what I was imagining it. But it's up to him, obviously. Let me bring, I'll bring Miggs in on, at the next meeting.
Like I said, maybe you have like a press release or something that this is a thing that we could do for our businesses. There's a number of them down there that might like to redo their infrastructure a little bit.
Yes, if you get any interest. It'd be nice, be nice to help a new guy get going, but it's also, you know, support the people that have been banned, yeah.
If this grant is approved, does it all have to be given out right away? I mean, like Jeff was just saying, if other people knew that it was, you know, say like you gave $10,000 to the brewery and kept 15,000 of it for someone else, you know, have the opportunity to get something started. Or it might help fill our storefronts down here.
Exactly.
If people knew that they come in here and if they could match $10,000, they can end up at 20 to do a project. Instead of giving it all to one person.
When does that have to go out?
This is due Jul- July 31st.
And you have to name someone?
It, it's, it's very specific. It says, it has to be shovel ready, last ditch effort for funding. So it can't be something that we just decide, well, we'll hold on to it. Which would be better? Or as good? Yeah. So it's like last, last year.
You sent an email about, or a text or something about a loan.
Yes.
That's different?
That's different. We did receive that and it's, it's 30,000 that the board or the town can then loan out to people that want to start a business or have a business in town.
So that, that's above and beyond. So that we have that money, or we will have that money to.
To loan out to businesses, yeah.
It may be good to put out a press release and say all these things so that we're not, we're not just.
Playing favors.
Playing favors, everybody gets a chance to come in. And, you know, I would say that they would send us, send proposals in advance.
It's gonna be a short window. It's gonna be proposals by like the 10th, so you can get them.
All right. Well, that money's here.
Next week, yeah.
That money's here. The 30,000 is, is set in stone.
Yeah, you, that's yours.
And then the other one would be something we would decide on. And when did you say you had to have this?
31st, the end of this month.
Okay, so you, we definitely didn't need to do it.
Yeah, we got a little bit of time.
July 16th.
All right, I'll blast something out. The company that did the telemetry on the south tank, remember they got hit by lightning? I asked them to give us some money back for the deductible. They said no. I argued with them a little bit and he just, I mean, he's, he stonewalled it, so. We did the construction on West Street. The Parade Committee, I don't know if you, well, you guys are part of the Legion. The Legion has donated $5,000 for the parade. So we're reaching out, we're looking for bands right now to kind of beef up our parade for next year.
$5,000?
It's not a lot of money.
It's great.
I couldn't believe it.
Maybe they're not gonna buy the sign. We heard anything about that, did? That's up there.
No.
Maybe they decided not to do that. It wasn't real popular. Maybe they decided not to do that. It wasn't real popular.
So, we did receive our town tax rate. We're still waiting on the school tax rate to, uh, to send out bills, but that should be coming. Uh, and our first Fairhaven Friday went off pretty good. Uh, our fifty-fifty went off well. We managed to collect eighty bucks for the playground, which is nice. Our next one is gonna be, not this Friday, but the following Friday, and that's gonna be the chili cook-off.
Um, can we go back to the, the topic before here and, uh, what kinda? We got, the taxes have gotten, we've gotta send bills out.
Yep.
I mean, they're due August tenth. People gotta get thirty days.
Yep.
So as soon as you get that, you're gonna have to call MRCB.
Yep, I'll, I'll call, I'll call you.
I thought we got that today.
That was the state side. We're still waiting for, or the town side. We're still waiting for the, uh, school.
Schools, of course.
Yep.
I might not be ready.
I know, I know.
I guess my other question is, can I, can you approve a tax rate, same as last year for the first quarter and then change it midstream?
I don't think we could do that. After we set the rate, you had to stay at the end of the year. You only think somebody, one time you talked to Bill, said your tax rate for the town.
We did that.
And a chance to have them send that bill out, it would, the option of having to send the school tax, the bad part, you gotta double mail it.
Yep.
And if that's the case, I think the school should pay for it.
Pay one time? It would just be the first one?
Yeah, you'd have to send out another tax bill with, with the school tax.
Another bill?
In all the printing. You're gonna do double printing.
Right.
You're gonna do, you know, I mean.
That would get people's attention, what the school tax.
Well, there's no reason, as Jeff said, there's no reason this, this isn't in here. They know what you're doing.
I, I would think.
The state needs.
Maybe there's some hiccup, I don't know. Could you call, well, you got, you got to a regular.
I'm here all week.
It's gotta be out by the tenth, right?
I would think so. Like gives people thirty days, because August tenth is very, is bad, right?
What happens, can we flex that? It's a due date?
You only, yeah, I was gonna say, the only way you might be able to.
Just have to give them a grace?
Push your due date down.
Twenty days in each one.
Suzanne said they, this is pretty common. And I remember last year it being like two days out that we had to hurry up and get everything done and be pushed out.
Right. It always is a crunch. It just doesn't make it any better.
Seems like this is getting worse and worse all about.
Well, I don't know if it is, but it's certainly not any better or anything. It's not, it's not any better and it's, it puts pressure on us that, that we don't have any control over.
I guess the easiest way for us to do this is to give them a grace, a few days grace period, whatever we go over.
If we, yeah, if we go over, we go over and we'll, that would be, that would have to be part of, um, communication in the tax bills that go out. Because people are gonna, people are going to be concerned.
We'll, we'll get one.
Alright.
We'll get it.
We'll get it. I'm, I'm counseling.
I, I'm having a pass, so just.
Okay.
We have to. But you're aware of the excitement that it creates.
And that's all I had for you.
Any questions?
Did you guys do the, do this?
Yes.
Yeah, that's all taken care of.
Yeah, that's all done. We got fuel for what, fourteen cents cheaper this year or something?
Yeah.
It was pretty significant.
Yeah, it was just over.
On one night. Twenty-four cents.
Oh, twenty-four, yeah. So that's pretty good.
As you hear last year, it was two and a quarter.
Right.
They were in local, it was two oh one, so it was pretty good.
Yep. Um, I'm gonna ask this of Board around table, but it's kinda, we have a, we have the new border potties, they're here.
Yep.
Do we have a service to take care of them?
To pump it?
Yeah.
It's, it's gonna go right into the septic system?
Okay.
Right hook direct to the septic, so we just pump it in.
Who's cleaning them?
Uh, rector's cleaning them.
Now that he brought that up, I have a question. There's a ramp for the handicap part of that, right?
It's coming, yeah. It had to be shipped separately.
Okay, but we do have a ramp to get into that. It's quite high up, right?
Yeah.
We don't have that yet.
It's, no, it's, it's shipped UPS, but it'll be here, yeah.
But right now, we can hook up the stairs and stuff. Are there stairs here for the other part of it?
Yes, there is.
There are, great, you just pull them out, okay. I just went down on top the other day. I just took it right down. And I didn't see them for the handicap part of it, that's why I just, yeah.
Where, where do you need a handicap ramp at the playground?
At the bathroom.
Bathroom.
Oh.
For the, yeah, the portable.
Okay, I just, just, and there's right down handicap ramp.
And they're up on, they're up on wheels, so they're like three feet high or something.
The thought was we could, we could move that for the construction part.
Probably not this week.
Yeah, well, there's nothing this week anymore.
The ramp is in here, you can't, you really want to move it up here, put up the ramp.
Yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't think, I mean.
Oh, well, no, somebody will call you out on that and that, and they'll be right to do with that.
Yeah, the guy brought it with a pickup truck, so anybody with something.
I think there is.
There is storage.
There's a, there's a flat tank underneath it.
It's supposed to be. That was one of the things we looked at.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, he looked at, he said, both the storage tank and the water, the freshwater tank and then the storage for the other.
It's got, it has hot water and everything?
Then he just don't, go back to the part, he just got the.
I know.
Right?
Right. That was the theory anyways. Yeah. Okay, well, let's see how it works, see how it goes.
It looks, it looks good. I mean, I was surprised hoping the handicap part. Because I mean, you got your, you've got your two regular ones on one end and then it looks like the handicap is quite large, so people can go get in on it pretty easy.
Good, good.
This is the town loan?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's to sell that, where the wreck ship was.
Alright, uh, solar power energy purchase.
So the M H G Solar came back and they said they were, they understood the town's concern about being locked in as the hydro project moved forward. Uh, they supplied us with a, with a contract, yeah, in and out for that. So if, if the hydro project does come in, uh, we can jump out of this.
Yeah, I mean, I like that part. It, uh, I think it's six months, but if we're, we know when we're gonna be six months out if we have a hydro project. We can notify those guys, but.
Unless we need to put themself in anybody else.
Alright. I, I did, I don't understand.
Yeah, go ahead. Is the school?
Oh, yeah, the M G.
It's the same people that are in the school.
I think so, yeah.
And what's the net gain to the town?
Uh, it's looking like about thirty-five hundred dollars a year savings.
Total?
A year, yeah, about this.
And no product? You're just buying power and saving money? I think I have it in here.
I mean, thirty-five hundred is thirty-five hundred, um. When do they need to know that? I'd kinda like to have the, the, the energy committee look at it.
I told him that the board would review today and then at the next meeting, I was hoping he could come in and then if you had more questions again. But yeah, there's at least two weeks.
Okay, and then, yeah, I could, I, I, it says may receive and it says a portion, but it doesn't say specifically what those are. You know, I just like to go through his, the charts here. There's a couple, there's a couple tables that I'd like to be explained.
Do we have a town attorney that would be familiar with any of this stuff?
I, I did send it to Bill, to Bill Blumer. Um, he, he wasn't a hundred percent on what, what the credits were.
Right.
Um, his concern was section three about moving credits. What did it say? Reallocate credits, which is something that, it, it, it was a big red flag when you read it. It's like, what do you mean, you're gonna take the credits?
There must be somebody that does these though. Like, I think Bill would know.
I could ask.
Who we would, or VLCT might know who we should go to.
I'll reach out.
It's very specific.
Would the league have?
Yeah.
I would go, I would go, yeah, I would go there.
Send us to the league and have them look at all of it and see what do you think?
Yeah.
Give us some kind of an idea what's, I mean, they must have, they must have dealt with this with another town somewhere online.
I'm sure, yeah.
Blackout of your dollars.
I don't think we should jump into something.
No. I read that section three, I mean, that they could bounce to different, to different, uh, they're different meters. So one time it would be the town office, another time it would be the town barn or something. That's what I thought that meant, but I'd sure like to know it. Really does mean.
I, I do have some of those questions in. I, I went through this and then asked, you know, I don't know, six or eight questions, so, but I'll get VLCT, they're gonna have to pay for it, but you gotta cover ourselves, right?
Yeah.
And then I guess my other question is, is this the best deal?
Right.
Should we, like bid?
Fish out, firing out of?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or, or, you know, we've had people come in and ask to build. We've talked about a number of different things. Are we ready to?
Yeah, I mean, that, that. We off, we offered, uh, the old landfill, which has been done in the past in different parts of town, or different, different towns.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there was some trees, tree pruning or tree cutting that we'd have to do to make that well.
This one's appealing because we don't build anything.
Right, and it's not in the way when we're done.
It's just down.
Right, yeah.
But for better numbers, I guess, for like.
Yeah, yeah. So thirty-five hundred a year is nothing to sneeze at, but it's, it's not, uh, fifteen percent of our, uh, our, our electric bill, which was a number bandied about when the, when somebody wanted to build at the airport. You know, it was fifteen percent plus a, a, um, a, some sort of lease agreement, but not willing to trade the airport.
I agree with that.
The old landfill would be perfect.
The old landfill would be perfect. Nothing's.
The governing law.
What's that?
The governing law, if something was a disagreement, went wrong and there's something is a disagreement, we have no right, we'd have no right to a jury trial for any claim against them.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd say that.
I'd just say, I'd like to see a, I'd like to see somebody great that really knows the law and, because I certainly don't.
The Boomer find that perfect.
This is also all confidential. There's a confidentiality clause that we haven't signed yet.
Yeah.
I just think, talking about it in a public meeting, I just think that this should be sent somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll get it to VLCT.
I mean, none of the specifics have been mentioned yet, but, but, uh, there are a lot of questions that we can't answer. Shouldn't expect you to be able to answer, but.
That's what I figured. You guys wanna talk about it and then after you hash it out, have the guy come back in.
Yeah, if you guys, I mean, email, email Joe if you have any other questions over the week. Because it's, uh, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's the first one we've seen in a while. Maybe there's other ones out there a little more lucrative, who knows? But it's worth.
Just asking.
Finding out. Any other questions now or we can move on?
Well, I guess there's a pretty easy way to save thirty-five hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Yeah. But on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar.
And it doesn't.
Annual electric bill, it doesn't seem like.
But it doesn't compromise your hydro project?
Not, it, it, it may because of using the red credits.
No, they're gonna, oh, so they're not gonna let that go as part of the.
They, they will. Their deal is, they did put in a, an escape clause.
Right.
It's a hundred and eighty days, fair enough, but we won't need those red credits until we're ready to go online with a hydro project if we ever do. So they, they've given us that escape clause. That's pretty, pretty decent.
It's hundreds of.
I don't know if it's standard or how it works or if that's the right line of.
I don't think it's standard, but.
Yeah. Oh, true. So, more to come. Any other questions that, if you have any, get hold of Joe. Okay, um, so we did the recreation build grant?
Yes, so this is, this is the second attempt at finding money to replace the Adam Street Bridge.
This is Mr. Chow?
Yes, secret, uh, secretary. The, the secretary can so choose to fund either a hundred percent or whatever percent he chooses for this project. I put the town contribution at ten percent. I figured that was a nice round number. Uh, that would take the seventy-three, seventy-three thousand eight hundred out of the bridge reserve, um, but it would also tap the grant match fund of the twenty-six thousand eight forty-eight.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what I'm.
Right. We have that, right? Somewhere around.
Yeah, I do have that. Okay.
So that would be like nine dollars they'd give us for every dollar we spent, which is not a bad.
This is a, um, this is higher.
Ninety-nine.
This is higher than the, the one proposal.
It is. The, the other proposal didn't take into account inflation.
Okay, yeah, it's been a while.
It has been quite a while, yeah, and I, I, I talked to.
Adam Street?
Adam Street, Adam Street Bridge.
Yeah, I, I talked to the state. I talked to V-Trans, who's willing to do the project management on that, on the Adam Street Bridge. And when talking with them, uh, they said, yeah, you better bump that number up because things got more expensive since twenty fifteen.
And they gave you guidance?
They gave me guidance.
That's what this is, only eighteen percent and.
Well, they said, uh, cost of construction and, and materials have gone up. Those are my numbers I pulled from federal sources, yeah.
Okay. Alright, that's what I was concerned about.
Total match, hundred thousand.
So is this one you're talking about that would have the sign?
Yes.
If you, uh, you get it, do you have to take it?
If we get, no, if you, if they gave you nine hundred thousand dollars.
But it feels like it, yeah.
You, you wouldn't have to take it, no?
Wouldn't be crazy.
Probably.
Yeah, we would.
But it's still a hundred thousand.
If you're gonna get the bridge put in, then they've already said that you won't put a single lane bridge, you'll be double lane bridge, correct?
Correct. Yeah, this is be for two cars.
If we open that road back up, it's gonna put.
Pedestrian.
Right now, if something happens to the other bridge, we're, we're screwed because there's no way to get the main street.
No.
So I mean, I mean, if we've had, if we've got money in reserve and a, and a grant, so their money's there, they meet whatever they want, you know, we have to match them with. If they give us the money, we're crazy enough to take it.
It's a lot of money.
Do we?
Be nice to have the bridge open.
Yeah, we're.
Do we need to start escrow, this is a question that doesn't.
Yeah.
Question that doesn't really totally fly by. Do we need to start escrowing the funds that we allocate for match to certain projects? So we don't end up with like four matches out of the same pot of money? Like accounting for it?
Oh, um.
You have, say, six grants out.
Yes.
For twenty-five thousand dollars today.
Mm-hmm.
And you get all of them and you only have seventy-three thousand.
Yep.
Problem.
Yeah, no, we're, we're well within our range.
Not a problem we have today, but this would put us tight.
No.
No. That's, that's the bridge, the bridge reserve.
Oh.
That would be.
And then that, the bottom line would be the.
Is that much in there?
The twenty-six.
The bridge reserve, yeah, seventy-three, whatever that is, it's seventy-three eight oh two twenty-five.
Come on, it's like seventy-three hundred in that.
Oh, no, no.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, and, and the.
Quiet now.
No, it's not, it's a legitimate question because.
I thought it was small.
I was thinking even taking twenty-six thousand, which I'm willing to, I'm more than happy to do, but I was thinking I was gonna eat.
A lot of.
What we have in the, what do we have in the reserve account? Uh, or the, uh, the.
The grant match.
Grant match.
It's eight, eighty-one thousand six hundred.
Okay, and that does not, that, does that include? Okay, and that does not, that, does that include everything that you've already been granted? Does that take?
That's all, that's all the cash that is in hand right now, yeah, that, that doesn't include anything deducted from match that's floating out there, but.
It would be good to hear what that.
But you haven't gotten any either.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll bring you total, but so far the running total wasn't any more than forty thousand.
Yeah.
So, but that's, it's significant.
It just means that we gotta think about replenishing that if we're going to.
Yeah.
I guess that's my point.
And that doesn't count what you dropped in there last budget season, which will hit in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Does the town have enough right of way to support it?
Was two lane, it was, it was two lanes originally. I do believe, was it?
It's the, the report.
I don't know if it was or not.
The original bridge was. They brought the, they brought the bridge that's here now from River, the double lane bridge on West Street, or River Street. One went down, and the other one moved it down here.
Right.
And then this has been, it's been rebuilt once since they moved it.
Yeah, I guess it wasn't, no.
I think it was always a single one before you.
Well, they did the engineering study, you know, you can look on that, it will be on that.
Yeah, there, there was no right of way issue from the, from the engineering study.
It's a good question, I'll put it that.
Got buildings.
It would be totally beneficial.
There's not a lot of, there's not a lot of anything but air there, you know, as far as, as far as, uh.
Well, you're up, up against the slate.
You're up against slate and.
Both sides.
The other side is very even property, correct?
Yes, outlet side.
The outlet side is very even property.
Oh, the other side, yeah, yeah. The other side of the bridge.
South side of the bridge is outlet, right, the old outlet property, we have that.
Oh, the, yeah, the south side.
The other side, the west side is, you've got slate up there.
Yeah, yeah.
You've got that slate yard.
Yeah.
That's workable.
Yeah, well, yeah, we.
But you've got two lanes that went into it, all right? You've already got your width.
You're down.
Right.
It's two lanes down to the corner.
You've got two lanes down to the bridge, to, before you get out of the bridge. Yeah, before you get out of the bridge, I mean.
Your right away is fifty feet.
From the middle of the road?
But you're on the, like, twenty-two eight, that's six wrong.
It depends where you are.
A lot of its fluctuations, so that's, that's different.
For most towns, it's fifty foot later.
But if they've done a study and a survey of the place.
Probably true, actually, too.
I'm sure they're better from the, kind of, print.
Yep. Yeah, the permitting and right of way is just absolute no.
Might, might be one thing in the way down there, along, that's the Sycamore agree, but a pump station. Kind of far away.
They make chainsaws for us, John.
Or the pump station.
The pump station.
Sam, fix that.
Okay, well, good luck. Do we gotta sign something, do you want a motion to that?
Um, if, if you wanted to give me a motion for the match, I would appreciate it, it would make Jenny happy, and then we could sign the, um, letter of support.
Is this a long shot, or?
This is very competitive, I'm, I did this once before and I reached round three, which is the secretary's desk.
And you upped your match?
And.
This time?
Well, that was in my last job, but this time it is more match, yeah, and we're in a rural area, so we're. I feel like our application is strong.
Well, I think that it's legitimate, the stuff that you mentioned is absolutely legitimate, and the safety and everything is legitimate, and we need that right back.
Make a motion for Joe to submit the grant and, uh, send this letter of support from the Board of Suckers.
With the, with the matches and then?
As presented, which is what.
As presented, okay.
Uh, not to exceed a hundred thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
One, one, nine.
No, the match.
All the match, I'm sure.
Right?
A hundred thousand what?
Hundred thousand six fifty.
Sorry, sorry.
The match, not to exceed, sorry.
I seconded it.
And he broke it out, but it's seventy-three eight oh two from the bridge repair reserve and twenty-six eight forty-eight from the grant match, but that's kind of.
Split in years. And you seconded, John seconded that? Any other questions? All those in favor?
All right.
All right. There's opposed.
That was, you mean it was?
You want the individual numbers?
Is that okay?
Would you put the individual numbers in there? Uh, Jenny will like it.
You can attach that if you want.
Bridge repair.
I would say replacement.
Yeah.
No, that's the name of the, of the reserve fund.
Oh, okay.
Seventy-three eight two, and the grant match fund is, I'm starting talking to myself.
It's okay.
It gets worse, you told.
Because I'm old.
I was gonna say, it gets worse.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Uh, bids for thirty south B.
Yeah, so we finally got that, through that process, uh, we received one bid, uh, the bid was for five thousand dollars.
Some seem like enough.
That covers water, um, it doesn't cover everything, it would cover water, um, our legal that's into it, and then a little bit of the back taxes, but it doesn't cover all of the taxes.
We have to cover, we have to get that, right?
We can't, we have the right to reject that.
Or you can get it back on the tax rolls and run it, but I don't know if it's.
Yeah, you, and the, the young lady that submitted it also submitted pictures she wanted to show, she would do a good job cleaning the place up.
I don't doubt, I don't doubt that she was.
Um, no, you don't, you don't have to, you could have taken any amount you want.
Did, uh, she provide the ten thousand?
She will provide the ten thousand.
That's an escrow?
That's, she'll, yeah, she'll hand that off and we'll escrow that until she cleans it up, as per the, uh, town ordinance.
What's your closure, folks?
I think we should at least cover our expenses. We should get back our, I think we should at least get our taxes and what's all, you know, the town has put our sewer and taxes.
You got one bid.
How far out did you advertise this?
How far out? It's been two weeks.
And how, just papers?
In the paper, locally.
You want expanded search?
This is, this is what was in the pre-press.
I, I did have five people that were interested in it, and we went and showed it a couple of times, but only. I, I did hear that, uh, feedback was that the ten, ten thousand dollar escrow really stopped people from bidding.
Is, do we really need a ten thousand escrow? Well, that's really my question, well, when you figured on the town cleaning the place up, what did you have the estimates? I mean, for the use of the containers and the time it would take and.
Uh, if we were to demo it ourselves, with, um, Doug Wood doing it, he would charge.
Twelve hundred dollars for him?
Yeah, twelve hundred.
We take the containers.
Yeah, and we, we estimated about four containers like we did with the, at, at the airport, and that was about, I don't remember exactly, but I wanna say six thousand dollars.
It was six thousand.
About, yeah.
So we're looking really at them on each other. So if you do an eight thousand dollar bond, or eight thousand, eight thousand instead of ten. You think that'd cover, I don't know what we had to do, I mean, it's, I just think that we really should be covering the expenses that we've got on the place.
What is our total expense that we've got?
Um, taxes and everything, we're ten thousand three something. Oh. Oh, there you go, thank you, guys.
I know, we're at ten thousand five.
Oh, ten five.
We're getting half of that if we sell it.
This is a real, this is a real sale, is it worth asking Realtor or someone like that to get more exposure?
For real?
It's worth more that way.
I don't, I don't know if it is.
It's only worth it if you can get some of the money.
Right, you only have.
Yeah, it's a building. Town water and sewer.
It's only worth it when you can get some of the money.
Right.
I have a question, is the bid acceptable as it is without the bond, or the ten thousand escrow submitted with it?
No.
So it's not even a valid bid?
Oh, no, yeah, no, this bid is fine.
You put out the bid with parameters, and one of the parameters was the ten thousand dollar check be provided for escrow. And the bid was not provided with the ten thousand dollar check in escrow, just a promissory.
Hmm.
Okay.
That's a solid point, though.
That's a legitimate question.
But you wouldn't.
I mean, there would be no transfer until you receive the ten, there would be no transfer until you receive that ten thousand, just like we do any sale, uh, we could sell it at a tax auction, and then you have so many hours or days to come in, hours to come in and pay.
I just assumed it would all be presented in the bid.
All right, we didn't specify, but a lot of times that is how it's done, yes.
We, we didn't specify that the taxes be covered.
We did.
Right, so, and the taxes aren't covered.
True.
I say re-advertise it.
Why someone must say advertise it?
That's my feeling, you know, um, I don't know how much more you can explain to it, I mean, you've got it in there, the, the taxes, the bills has to be covered.
We didn't put, I don't think.
We didn't put it.
Say that. We didn't put them in a.
Well, what if you put it in the, put in the ad, the bid must cover previous, or any outstanding bills on the property? Plus the, plus the.
You wanna, you wanna just come up with a minimum number? Joe hates that.
I, I do, but at the, the number.
We didn't want to eat it.
The number is, no, it did, but the number is out now, so.
Is it?
Oh, ten thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars sixty-seven cents.
There it is.
I mean, I'd redo it with the same provisions and.
Well, I mean, if you bring up the ten thousand dollar bond, because the town's not, don't, if someone buys it, they're not going to fix it, they're not gonna clean it up, we can't.
The town's open, no.
No, the town can't. All they gotta do is put a bond out there to make it stink if they don't.
Yeah.
Make it three thousand, five thousand.
There you go.
A more reasonable number, it's not gonna scare people away.
Yeah, we, if they don't clean it, we gotta make sure we got enough money in this, in this bond.
You're not gonna clean it though, Jenny, it's someone else's property, you can't clean it.
All you're doing is incentivizing.
That is.
But if you've got it.
That's a draw hold, well.
If you're holding ten grand, usually people do.
That's what I'm saying.
But, but you, you've just gotta make it stink, if ten grand is scaring them, because, well, how do I know I'm gonna?
What if, what if Jeff is a real stickler?
You're right, well, yeah, no, they're not gonna give, they're not gonna give any of the property.
What if you dropped it to seven, I think the seventy-five hundred bucks, if you're gonna hold?
I don't know, I didn't think the ten was that bad.
I didn't either, but I mean, if they're, if they claim that's what's scaring people away, I mean.
Maybe it's just not worth that, maybe that lot is not worth.
Yeah, but you got a nice lot up top.
It's a nice lot up on top, it's flat, it's, it's large.
It just might take more than two weeks to find a motivated buyer.
Well, I think you have one in that person, but, and I just think they think they're gonna lowball it. I, I mean, I.
And, and then they're gonna lose the ten grand? They might be thinking that they're gonna lose the ten grand.
If they don't clean it up, they will.
Okay, the definition of cleaning up is pretty broad term.
Well.
Not to our common.
Anything would be better than that was.
You can put covenants and deeds, can't you?
Sure.
Why can't that be just a deed of covenant that it?
Gotta be cleaned up.
Returned to a.
Satisfactory, to the top.
Then if, if it's not clean, it needs to be, the house has to leave, you know, be cleaned up. Has to be returned, at least to a bare lot, couldn't it say something like that?
I don't, I don't.
They bid for five thousand.
Why would you wanna return it to a bare lot? There already has a structure there.
It's not much of a structure.
The conversation here has been that it would be nice if that was a, that property was cleaned up.
Somebody did a do-over, it's, it's pretty rough, the, um.
I've never been in it.
Have you been in a town, though?
No, I haven't, I've been on the roof. That's pretty bad.
Yeah, I.
What if?
It's pretty rough all the way around, I don't sure.
I don't think five thousand, no.
What's that?
I don't think five thousand, no.
Well, it's five thousand less than our, our cost.
We could drop the.
But.
We could drop the escrow and we could start enforcing some of our obligations for cleanliness and.
Try it. And, and then you, you might get into grandfather's, you know, which we have done with other people, not these. Not these people, not this.
If we didn't clean it, we're saying what, nine thousand, eight thousand?
Just call it ten grand.
Ten grand. And there's ten thousand dollars.
You'd be a minimum of twenty to twenty-five.
Right, so you put the lot, after you clean it all, you put the lot in the market for twenty-three thousand dollars, it's still a pretty cheap building, huh? It's got water and sewer, town water, town sewer, I mean, that's worth, any lot, that's worth ten thousand dollars, I don't care anyways.
It is, it's, I think that's exactly what we, it's five thousand pieces.
Yeah, I, I mean, so you're looking, that's still a pretty good deal, I mean, and even if they have to run it to the top of the hill to do it, I mean. So I mean, I wonder if we should do.
Sometimes a lot that is too cheap backfires on you.
What's that?
Sometimes a lot that is a screaming hot deal backfires on you, people, people who are looking for a nice house lot, they just go right over it, they, they won't even look at it because it's too cheap.
But.
Utilize the eyes of the beholder.
The other way to think about this, too, is we have a bid on the table, who's willing to put the, who's willing to put the, uh, the escrow up? And has done good work in the past in the place that she has now. We're, we would be out, we would be out five grand, or we would have that lot, whatever it is, back on the tax rolls. It, right now, it's in our laps.
That's true.
So, make, make the escrow five, and make, because she moves five thousand towards the purchase, make your five thousand escrow, take five thousand from the escrow requirement. Make your, make your, uh, your number for what you owe, what you, what you had out there, okay, and then there's a five thousand dollar escrow.
That's not a bad, that's not a bad.
Change the deal in the middle of the stream, though.
No, we'd have to totally rebid it.
I don't, that wouldn't be fair to others.
You could totally rebid it.
We can't, you'd have to reject this one.
Re-bid it.
Yeah, and rebid it.
Right.
And rebid it. Like that.
Just.
I don't, you know, like I said.
Talk themselves into service.
Can you, all right, that's another question, can you put in, you're putting in the last bid and put in a ten thousand dollar escrow, correct? Can you put down a five thousand dollar escrow and a minimum bid of ten thousand?
Yeah, we can do it, well, they can do what they want, yeah, it's your, it's your.
Could you do that, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
And that way there, that would cover everything and we still have our stuff in escrow.
Okay.
And you got it back on the tax rolls.
And you got it back on the tax roll, and that's what I'm.
The way I understood the bidding process was that you'd come up with the back taxes, which is the ten thousand five hundred, and then you required another ten thousand dollar check to be submitted with the, the bid.
Yes.
To be put into escrow, to be returned in forty-five days upon completion of the cleanup, which is gonna be authorized by the town department of public work. That's my understanding.
Yeah, I say, I say we rebid it.
It's basically what I understand. Except I thought you'd get your check the day we approved it, the next week.
Yeah, it would be like tomorrow.
No, the advertisement.
You have to cover the taxes.
They will need that, I do.
That's all. No minimum bid. I mean, no minimum bid.
Right to reject anyone, all right?
Well, that's what I'm saying, why can't you put a minimum bid? Do a five thousand dollar escrow.
Yeah, we have the right to reject, we didn't, um, we didn't put a minimum bid, but I think maybe we, we could, I, personally. I hate to see, I, I hate to see a buyer walk, I, I don't want the town of Birmingham to be a real estate agent, but I understand we're giving up, we're giving up five thousand dollars, is what we're doing, yeah.
But if somebody buys it, we're gonna give up the whole nine yards, we're gonna pay it anyways.
But you can't clean it, we can't just have you go in and, you know, get your.
What?
He's afraid he's.
I don't have flak or a joke, no one has the material.
Right. Oh, based on hazmat, well, we don't know if there is hazmat.
There is.
You wonder if.
As soon as you, as soon as you grab the roof, you're hazmat.
Yeah, all right.
I say, you know something, I guess I went through it, Bob. It's, I know, I know we're gonna lose five.
We're gonna go through this whole process.
Yeah, and, I guess they got forty-five days to clean it if they purchase it, correct?
Yep.
All right, by September first, we could have the place cleaned up and it's on a tax rolls. What's the lot when you were?
It was currently a forty-four, I think it was.
Okay, well, it'll go down a little bit without the structure, right?
Well, it's just a lot.
You'll do.
But whatever, it's a lot.
There's nothing that says they have to remove the structure in the.
No, there isn't, but they've got a clean effort of their own.
Yep.
And I say we do it. Why not? I mean.
We could battle us out and this could go on for another year.
Yeah. And all the time, we're not getting anything out of it.
What are the taxes on it per year?
Thirty-two hundred.
Thirty-two hundred.
Thirty, thirty-two hundred? That's a lot. We make it up in two years.
The structure that go down the road.
Yeah.
If they do tear it down.
Taxes this year are one thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents.
That's what I thought, that's all.
You guys are aiming in, what, you know, two, three weeks and then make that decision.
I, you might not have a buyer, that's my fear. I, I don't know that, you know, I, you know, it's a roll of the dice and like.
All right, let's.
I think worst case, we go back without the escrow.
You put out a bid that was very unclear.
Let's put, let's put up a minimum.
Put out a bid that was very unclear.
That was clear.
No, no, you were trying.
Should've had a minimum bid.
You should've had a minimum bid.
Let's shut, then let's, I'll make a motion that we rebid it, we put a ten thousand minimum bid on it and a five thousand dollar holding fee. I'll second that.
Escrow?
Escrow fee.
Do you want it to be the, the total number, ten thousand, five hundred, whatever?
That's fine.
Okay.
Well, no.
I didn't even do just ten thousand. Let's do a flat ten thousand.
Okay.
Five thousand dollar escrow.
I think the board is obligated to cover the back taxes, taxes. Not obligated legally, but obligated to the taxpayer.
I know, I, but I'd, I'd rather have it on a tax roll no matter what.
Let's have.
We need more than.
I.
Do we need to vote on the first?
Put it back in for, you should vote on the first thing.
On the, uh.
To take it or twenty.
Okay. Sixteenth, the thirtieth of June.
Maybe not, maybe not.
Well, we have the right, I think that's a good point. Hold your motion.
Hold your board.
I don't know if you have to, just asking.
I think, I, yeah, I think, I think you're right. That, that makes sense. We, we should reject the first, the bid we got. We write reviews and then we'll go with the.
With the motion.
Yeah, so I'll take a motion to reject a bid if that's our.
So.
Or second.
Second.
I'll second third, maybe. Okay, who wants it?
Move.
Second, how's that?
Okay.
To reject.
All of you in favor?
All right.
I go, no.
Mr. Seuss.
All right, now you can make.
Now, I'll make a bid to re, we'll re, yeah. Re-advertise it with a minimum bid of ten thousand dollars and a five thousand dollar escrow cleanup.
And we were open.
Same.
On the thirtieth?
On the, let's open them on the thirtieth. That's two weeks, three weeks.
Yeah.
One, two, four weeks.
I still wonder if we have thirty.
Eight or eight months?
Yeah, you are, you're up here. We're right here.
Yeah.
The ad won't come out in the paper until here because it's definitely.
For the thirtieth, the closing on the thirtieth.
You want.
Of July.
You can't, you won't get one in today or for Friday. Yeah, the next, the next ad will come out here, that'll give you three weeks of ads.
Yeah.
That's all.
What's the cost of the ad? Ballpark.
No.
The bids on the thirtieth?
On the thirtieth, yes. Nice setting of how big.
Okay. Everybody understand what we're doing? All of you in favor?
All right.
All of you are both.
I still wonder if this doesn't go well, we should reach out to a Realtor. You know, if we don't, we don't get a minimum or whatever.
But.
If it doesn't, we'll be talking to Dougie.
Roger's saying, the person that already made the bid has already, has already put the fifteen thousand dollars in.
But they think they're gonna get back.
Oh, yeah, but, but still, they'll get.
Five back.
Yeah.
This could be an opening gambit anyway.
Try it.
It's free to ask.
Okay, we are moving on.
Um, so does, does a check for the escrow have to come with the bid?
I would think so.
That was a sticky question.
Yeah, but if they're buying it, yeah, I would say the escrow has to be there.
I would think that when we pick the bid, it would just be the next couple of days that would come through.
Yeah, they, yeah, when you, when you choose the bidder, they should.
They gotta come in with a check. If they don't come in with a check, we'll, we'll down the list.
Yep.
Okay. Well, we'll restart.
Everybody okay, everybody comfortable? Yep. Fair enough. Um, PPE policy, which is protective, personal protective equipment policies. Um, this is a first draft and review. Has anybody seen this? This is fairly standard OSHA stuff, I'm assuming.
It is, this, this came from, uh.
Thanks, guys.
Green Mountain Safety.
Thanks, guys.
Green Mountain Safety, who's, uh, they're affiliated with our new insurance company. We reached out to them because we kind of wanted to, uh, beef up our safety situation.
Good. So, we should look at this and we should be prepared to adopt on the sixteenth.
Kind of compare the list to what we had at GE.
Yeah, that's what I, that's.
Both the same thing.
Oh, it's gonna be, I mean, it's, it, it's all gonna be OSHA covered, you know, but I'll, let's adopt this on the sixteenth, next, the next meeting.
Why? I've already got shirts ordered for the.
Good.
Yeah, yeah. Why, why do we need a specific policy when we should just, shouldn't we just follow the OSHA handbook?
Yeah, but if you write it down.
I don't want to duplicate.
You're not duplicating, you're just, you're just, um.
I want it worded the same way that they do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You see what I mean?
I mean, I'm thinking that's, this is boilerplate language.
Okay.
You make it specific to your town's needs of what you're doing.
Okay.
Well, I, I, it's fairly, you know, if you're, if, yeah.
There's no, there's not a lot of sway to the OSHA rules.
Right, right.
I'm pretty sure we just follow. Shouldn't it, shouldn't it just say follow of OSHA, follow OSHA?
Yeah, but it's.
They'll be, your position change.
Yeah, and, right, they can change theirs and then we're gonna have this policy that's not as strict.
It would be worth the question, asking the question.
I, I just wonder if we don't need, I, I want the year to be safe. I completely support this. I'm not saying don't do it. I'm just saying, I think we already are, should be following this thing.
Policy whether you do it or not, right?
We should be, but sometimes there's specific stuff for, for a job, whatever, and sometimes it's nice to have it written down just so you can go back and say, here's what it says, here's what we say without, without going through dragon, it may be.
A hundred and fifty pages.
Right, it may be shorthand for what's in the OSHA rule.
This is what I was referring to, uh, right here.
And you're, so.
One state right there covering the lot, Green Mountain Safety, and they're affiliated with our insurance company.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right. So, can't be too far wrong.
The person knows.
No, the insurance company recommended we do this.
The insurance company recommended we do this.
Yeah, like you need to have this.
Well, this is reflected.
It's boilerplate, I'm not.
Right on the shirt.
You get what I'm saying. I'm just trying to be.
Material.
We're succeeding to it.
I'm trying to. Okay.
So, that, if there's anything that jumps out at you and if you're, if you can, in your spare time review, that you got a bulkie or either of you.
The only thing that you might have to do is put signs. There are signs that are not big enough, not up to code.
But that's different than GDE though, that, the signs.
Right.
But, uh, you know, you can delegate too.
Yes, I can. In all his spare time.
Yeah. All right, so that's a, we will adopt that policy on the next, um, the next, uh, meeting, which is the sixteenth.
I, I forgot to mention something during, do you mind if I?
Go ahead.
During my report, the cornerstones have been placed in the cemetery, Al, Al Green.
Yep.
The stones are set.
Good, thank you.
They ever miss it?
They were on, yeah, they were on.
Squeaky wheel gets oil, but that's been a while.
Fifty weight.
Agreed.
All right, uh, we have the addition on the new business, uh, discussion of the governor's highway safety program. You start.
My feeling is unless it, it's costing us money to do this. They're using people that should be on duty in town and I feel they're using it just to subsidize their paychecks. Putting miles on the cars doing it and I don't think what, what few token things we get out of it is pretty small. Personally, I'm, look, I think, I personally think we should get out of the program.
What are the dates that that covers or do you just get out of it? Don't you enroll for a period?
It's, we could just choose not to do it, not to take part. It's one of those rolling things where there's no given number. Just an annual fiscal, not fiscal year, calendar year thing.
Straight back to the same thing. We're not up for lease.
That's, that's the biggest thing for me. I, you know, when we ask about it, we hear that it's only in Fairhaven. I don't know that. Um, I don't think we see locations, you know.
We don't want to document a patient.
Well, I, yeah, see, we don't get, we don't get where they go or anything like that. For me.
They used to write, go.
Well, they say they do, it's, it's actually part of their time sheet. It says, uh, HS Highway Safety, um, but it doesn't say where they go or anything like that. Um, I don't think it's worth the trouble. I would rather have those guys spend this time in town, in town, I agree with Jerry Hudson.
Well, I, I noticed, uh, on, on the time sheets, they've got eight hours for highway safety and three hours on the same sheet for something else in that same time period. I don't understand why that is.
Well, I, I don't know why it's. You know, for instance, for instance, uh, the chief has five hours on his time sheet this week and the two, and he's got vacation last day. So, he's taking vacation and he wants to do highway safety and the sheriffs have a car and a need. He could do it that way and not, he's not losing any money on, he's just not doing it on our time. It's kind of.
Or with our equipment.
Or with our equipment, it, it, that, that feels to be like a double dip.
Can you do that? I don't know. I didn't think you'd let him work in another.
I didn't, I didn't think, I thought we got in trouble doing that before.
Will you let, will the town of Fairhaven let him work in another town? I guess we do.
Oh, yeah.
We do already.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's.
Working in New York.
And you're working well.
At Wells.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a different time. So, while he's taking vacation on our dime with our, with our cruiser and our stuff, he's, he's going on a highway, highway safety. And I'm sure the other guys do the same thing.
But is that really anything to you?
Yeah, they, yeah.
He could take his vacation.
Take his vacation and go work someplace else, that's fine. It's, it's, I don't think it's, I don't, you know, I don't know.
I guess the only thing I'd ask is that this discussion be on a mourned agenda. That's all I. So, the people know, the people that are affected by it know one can come in and defend themselves and they bail them. I don't.
Then warn on the next agenda.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that in a way. I mean, we're trying to, you know, yeah, I don't disagree with that.
I, I think Glenn might appreciate that too.
All right, then we will, we will table, please. It's a, it's a public discussion too. It's certainly not anything that we would have to go into executive session for. All right, so it's gonna be worn in the next one?
Yep.
And, uh, all right, with your.
Sounds good to me.
All right, then we'll table that until then.
Is there anything the board would like to see for that discussion? Uh, or if you think of something?
Obviously, any numbers that you can put together or the chief can put together, um, uh, you know, the, the thing that we always hear is we're getting stuff for like a camera or something like that. What does that cost? You know, that kind of.
And the other thing is all you're.
And the mile, we have to take.
The miles of this car, we gotta take care of these cars afterwards.
Yep, the miles and.
He's saying it's in Fairhaven. If those miles are in Fairhaven, I don't really have a big, I don't really have a problem with it either way.
You're not.
We all know where I stand on.
Yeah.
But he has stated that they're in Fairhaven.
When you're up at Pointe Two in Benson.
I've seen him up there, but I don't know that that's governor's highway safety, Constable.
Well, according to the stuff you see in there, that's what it is.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's get, let's get this.
There's no reason for us to be on Pointe Two above town line to begin with, now. We have no contract with Benson, we have no contract with West David, there's no reason that we're up there on radar above Elton Town. I would like to see a policy where the cars then leave town unless it would be extremely urgent.
No, they do do, uh, they do do backup.
Yeah, but they do backup, especially stuff that's totaled, so I mean. Yeah, but they do backup, they're selling stuff to total, so I mean...
Selfishly, biasly, I like that they're slowing down traffic on twenty-two A.
Well, the state police can do the same thing, I...
And they do, and they're pretty hard to...
My, my basic idea is I want the town, the town of Fairhaven Police Department to be in Fairhaven.
Proper.
Proper. And, you know, they're gonna have to go, they're gonna have to go for backup, you know, but do we need everybody at, at every vendor, vendor, exactly like that, in Polk, and wherever else they go? You know, or do you need five cops on a DUI or something, I don't, I don't know. But I, so we will discuss this more often on the sixteenth, we're loading the sixteenth right up, aren't we? Ready to go back to work, okay. Uh, parking lot, anything there jumping out at anybody?
Anybody done any work on, uh, smoking ordinance on vacant?
No.
No. Everything, everything else besides the safety equipment and the thirty South Main, it's, uh, it's been sitting pretty stagnant.
No, okay.
Yeah, I mean, this one here too is coming up to, uh, the capping reserve funds, I mean, we're coming into budget, and, and just, that's something everybody should think about. We don't need to keep continually adding if we get to a point.
Well, some of them do.
Some we do, some are every year, I mean, the, the DVW and the police vehicles, ever, that, those kind of things.
Give us a thing on selling the scrap down there someday.
Oh, yeah. If it's just scrap... In your spare time. If it's just scrap, shouldn't he be able to just take it?
We started in inventory.
If it's really scrap, scrap.
But that, does anybody know that he can take that out and hang up to the oxygen?
You'd have to just ask Kamara, I bet he...
Or don't, I don't believe they take it from, I think you gotta be a dealer to put the cars in there.
Yeah, you might be better off to, uh...
Is, is Kamara a dealer, would he just put it in for us?
What's that?
Is Kamara a dealer, would he just put it in for us?
I don't know if you could ask him.
Worth asking, worth asking.
I have no idea.
I mean, he's...
Nobody's ever been big asking the question.
He's fairly cooperative, he wants to be a good citizen, so he may do, do that just to be...
Did we get no bids on that truck? Probably that one's for four hundred maybe. If you scrap it, you're not gonna get one.
Well, scrap is six cents a pound now.
No, that's my point, you're not gonna get it for two hundred.
So, you might get to it, but...
I mean, my plan was to take a couple days and start cleaning up like we done here.
In your spare time?
Whatever you can do.
I haven't been to the, uh, that's roundtable, I haven't been to the airport, did we put a pile of grindings down there?
That's not a pile, it's a mountain.
It's a mountain, I bet it's a lot.
Good.
Cool.
Yeah, nice. It's good stuff, it's better if it chews right off, I'm sure, but, alright, um, I'm hearing no other thing, we'll go to roundtable, Jake?
Checking on renting a tractor for, not, I'm not talking about help, but I'm talking about, going to Young's or Salem Farming Equipment, try to rent a tractor.
Yeah, we've reached, I've reached out to a few folks, uh, and I know Sam has been reaching out too, Jeff is gonna help us with...
They called me, but I, I called the Mountain View and asked, and nobody, nobody wants to do it.
Nobody wants to rent a tractor?
Nobody wants to rent, yeah. I...
Well, what do farmers do when they need a tractor for the farm?
Sometimes they'll rent them to us if we have something in the shop, but they don't like to anymore. It's...
Liability.
It's getting ridiculous, like...
Very liable.
It's frustrating, about doing, you're gonna get us a skid steer now.
Actually, that's one of those. Too bad you couldn't find a farmer that's got a couple extra ones up there.
So we've been talking about it, but we're just kinda out straight, but I...
All, all the tractors down here to, to, uh...
Weatherbees?
Weatherbees, are they...
Weatherbees and Velatika.
Are they used or not used?
He uses quite a bunch of them.
You use them down there?
I don't use them.
No, I...
He, he does, Tyler's doing a...
Tyler's using his for ham, you know, and, and, these are the ones at Weatherbee Farm?
Yeah.
Okay.
His son's doing some ham. He's got all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, that's, that's, you know, that's what I thought, getting one just to empty the ground.
Yeah.
And then what's happening with the deeds to the playground?
Good question.
I, last I heard, it was moving forward, and then I hadn't heard anything since, I'll ask again.
The swap?
Yeah, that was, it was all surveyed out, and it should have been going forward.
They did survey it?
Yeah.
About nine...
Months ago though, I totally dropped off my radar.
There's no reason they haven't got the deeds to switch around.
Maybe that's why the tax, this will taxes are...
I'm gonna put that, if the board doesn't care, I'm gonna put that in the parking lot, so I don't pay them.
Yeah, they just did.
Is, is there an amount, just going back to the, what's it worth to rent something?
Well, I don't know, I mean, I'm just, what's it, what's it gonna take, three weeks to move over all sites?
If that, right?
That's a lot, I don't...
I was gonna call Salem and see what they have.
Yeah.
Is our mower good enough to do it?
I'm just saying, we get, if we can get something to come in and do it, and do it, if we can rent it for three weeks and get it done, I think it'd be a hell of a lot cheaper to try to find another tractor.
I think so too, but I've been looking for stuff online, I mean, I, I did find some decent, used, not a bone, but like a side mount.
Yeah.
Three-point hitch for, you know, like twenty grand.
But we, the mower is fairly new, isn't it?
They're saying it's junk.
It's not...
I thought they bought it like three, four years ago.
They're saying there's holes right up through the top of it.
Actually, like it's been cobbled a little.
I, but I mean...
Could have, could have taken it right down.
Cause we talked about welding a piece over the top, you said it's pretty thin.
The road says you gotta be more, so we'll do something.
We'll get there, it's, up until like four weeks ago, I thought our mower was good.
But you did tell, but you did tell me that worst case, someone like Castleton, when they get theirs done, would come over.
Yeah, we talked to Castleton, they, they said, you know, once they're done with theirs, they'll come over with a, with an operator and help us out.
So...
We'll get it done, one way or another, we'll get it done.
What do the guys West Taylor calls?
West Taylor?
Books, books let them use theirs.
Books let them use their stuff up there.
They have a big bat wing with just one wing, and they go down the edge. Is that where we're...
Maybe we can...
They might come, like Brian might come right in and just go for it.
That's what I'm saying, if, if they've done it, then maybe they'll come down and just...
I'll get you their content. It's a good idea.
John?
Nothing.
I don't think. West Street came out good?
I think West Street looked pretty easy.
I haven't been on...
Brian's real good.
I haven't been on...
I thought, I thought it went out good, like...
Awesome. You were apprehensive about working on them, so it turned out?
That's fine too.
Yep.
I mean, I...
Nothing out of...
Might have had to do that with them too.
Good transition, starting out, then...
We should do, yeah, papers.
One of the problems we've had in the past is there wasn't enough babysitting, you know? It's sad, but true.
Dirt, dirt on the back and pulling that dirt, you're gonna pull that back in against the pavement, right?
Can we use... What are we shouldering with, just dirt, or, or can we put some of those grindings down the edge?
But I, there's a couple places where you just push the dirt back.
I saw that, yeah.
And I figured, and then...
Bring that back in, yeah.
Bring it back to your dirt, back to the pavement, just so it's solid against that pavement.
Makes sense.
Just that few drops of rain kind of run where you wanted, where it's right place where they go.
Oh, to get it. Should it come in on bid?
He said he'll get it.
Okay.
Better. The more money you give them.
Two inches is two inches, I mean, that's what you paid for.
Yeah.
Yeah, when the planner didn't, was lacking that far touching anything, I'm good.
Um, have we done anything, looked, looked at the parking, parking lot, south park, the, the free parking, we were talking about maybe organizing, maybe looking for grant money or figuring out how we could start, the recommendations of the downtown development, maybe?
Uh, so there, there is a, a grant through the state that has not been released yet, um, but no, I was waiting on that, did you want to serve a committee?
No, I, I mean, we've got, uh, we've got the people in downtown development, they, they were willing to stay on, but they, they definitely want, I would think they'd wanna see some sort of project. That, that one always seemed to me to be the easiest and the least, least controversial to start, and I think it's one of those deals, if people see that and see what the result of that is, they'll, they'll see that there's merit to some of the other suggestions too.
Yeah.
That's my whole, but I mean, I, I think we should do that anyways, that's, that's a, you know, obviously, we gotta get some help from somebody we can't afford it by ourselves, but, uh, it would look, it would make the downtown look so much nicer, yeah.
I just thought of something, where we park cars on the southwest side of the park, there's a road that goes up to Rasmussen's.
Yep.
There, that needs some work, that's our road.
To Rasmussen's.
Oh, the road, yeah, that's ours, and that cover up there...
Wasn't on the list.
Check that, the other thing too, where you're down there, uh, we haven't talked about this for a while, but the tree that is between Rasmussen's and Betty Barnum, um, yeah, maybe, maybe in our right of way, and she's, um, at the south end of the, the west end, southwest end of the park, there's the big, Ra, that Rasmussen's now is the road you're gonna look at to see if it's in there, then there's a tree between the two buildings, the small cape and the big building, um, I'd like to see if that's in her, in our right of way, she was looking for some help getting that down, and she was willing to pay half, the town would pay half. And, um, that would be nice, but that is, yeah, I mean, I, it's, it would be nice if we could justify it, but we, we actually, there's more to that.
We've got a safety column up.
There's more to that story, but it's, it's not public yet.
Can we get a, can we do...
Good.
I'm backing up, so if you want...
I am too.
Can we get a list of what needs to happen to the Sami and, uh, rush out to fix it and to run it? And if, if it's not doable, I mean, we should just put that out, and that can pay for the guy to come in and do it, but, just a question.
The tractors don't get rid of?
I mean, no sense kicking it around.
Well, if one's a lot harder, you're gonna... There's a chance of somebody getting hurt, and you're gonna bring...
We don't use it for anything else.
Yeah, but we don't wanna do something, put somebody out there where, where somebody's gonna get hurt, or you're gonna hurt somebody while they're mowing, and, you know, if it's unfixable...
I talked to, I talked to OSHA today about it, because they have rules, rules are different for farm tractors or like what we're using.
Is this a commercial tractor?
Which is probably the reason I shouldn't want to send mine back.
Yeah, this shouldn't be being used for what we're...
It just makes me nervous.
Yeah, I would love it. I think that's a good idea, but it's unfixable, let us know.
If you were paying it, we could do it, you could, any clap trap thing that you want, cause he's a farmer, we could...
They're talking about it.
I don't, I don't think it'd make a group of cow chase thing. Anybody look at the balance sheet that we got?
Uh, no.
Uh, it really needs to be looked at, there's one department that is overspent, unbelievable.
Where are you?
It's just, just, you can go through and look for it, I hate to point it out, because everybody says I'm picking on it, so...
Okay.
No, your, your, matter of fact, your looks really good, but...
No, that's my job.
One section here, we're, overtime, for ten thousand dollars over overtime.
Okay.
So, just go through your reports a little.
Okay.
We're, we're, uh, yeah, the SRO, advice for nine thousand dollars over budget on that, explain that.
Do we get reimbursed for that?
Go through it, just go through and look at that, and we'll discuss it next week, because... I think we oughta get reimbursed.
I think we get, I think we...
Those are valid questions, I'm not...
Why don't you go, go through it, that's your, you go through and see what you think, and bring it up next week, because I, I was blown away when I was through this, so...
Six thousand on SRO, right?
Unleashed, yeah.
Yeah, uh, I guess you, and we need to know whether we get reimbursed for that overtime, if we don't...
I think you do.
We do, if, if you...
It's in the contract, as long as we send a bill.
Why is it that much money?
I don't know.
So that, that...
I think the school asks for it, but I don't have...
That line is over expended, but if you look at your revenue, you see you have six thousand dollars more in revenue, um, one more bill will be coming in, and that should cover that additional charge. Yeah, the school asks for this, they're always...
Ten thousand dollars on overtime.
I, I asked Jenny, cause that nu, that number was, um, a lot, but that's, there were two reasons for that, one is because the, um, comp time comes out of it, and she's been paying it out every six months, and we had an officer leave who had a, a lot of banked time, you know, saved time.
What officer?
Upkenberg, we lost two guys this year, this fiscal year, and that's where that money came from, they had a lot of banked time.
There's a lot of things in that one budget area that's pretty scary.
Yeah, it raised a red flag, so yeah, I asked Jenny.
Revenue, and revenue's up, about twelve, thirteen thousand dollars, so, and that's another reason to keep their boys in town.
One more thing, yeah, one more thing, uh, the water ordinance we passed in, uh, June, June eighteenth, we need to sign, we already passed it, we don't need to do anything, is that signed?
Yes. So we gotta put a sewer one too?
I think we changed the water.
Just the water, yeah. Oh, is that for the pavement?
Yeah, I didn't have a clean copy for you at the time.
No, no, but...
Yes.
Wasn't there two, two different sections, one for sewer, one for water on it?
Yeah, that was, that, yeah.
Oh, there was a sewer one as well, so maybe you had a clean copy of that, okay, so it's just that we didn't have a clean one this time.
Oh, so the one, the sewer was clean, that's...
It's done.
Yeah.
Oh, you said, it was just the signature page, we made some small change.
Yeah.
Financial? Looks good. Thanks.
Checkbook, three hundred fifty-two thousand, eight hundred thirty-six dollars and seventy cents, motion to pay the payroll warrant, it's a short one, I'm assuming because we were here, you guys were here.
Yeah.
Writing, ten thousand, twenty-one dollars and sixty cents.
Sorry, somebody did it, you did it.
All those are fair?
Alright, all opposed?
Motion to pay, motion to pay the general fund warrant, one hundred nine thousand, six hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-one cents.
Sorry.
There must have been something in there.
There were a couple of big things in there.
Oh, I may know this one, did I sign your one? Your I N S on that one. Water loan payment and, uh, insurance.
All those are paper?
Alright.
All those are folks? Don't deal.
One quick question, one more, have you checked with the rescue squad at all, see what's going on there?
I have, uh, I did call, I don't call the young lady's name, I called her and left a message, never heard back, she said she wanted to meet.
It's, it's not good, well, I just, whatever, but let's find out what's going on.
Make a plan.
We're ready to give you fifty thousand dollars, let's find out what's going on. I think we have a right to ask. I think, I think we should invite all of the directors of the rescue squad to a meeting.
Can you not send that?
Well, there's nothing we can do.
Orders are moved, orders are moved. But if, if we're, if, you don't have to, you don't have to send money to something that is not gonna be there.
Let's find out what's going on, let's get some idea, I mean, I don't wanna start a rumor about what's happening.
No, no, no.
Bring them in here, so we know exactly what's going on, and whether we can help some way, or if there's something else, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We need a rescue squad, I don't care how you look at it, we have to have a rescue squad, and I just would like to, I'd like to hear their version of what's happening.
Okay.
Before something really does happen.
Good plan.
Anything else?
I make a motion, I second it, to adjourn.
Sounds great.